Called by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and again for the opportunity to live in beautiful Fergus Falls. Lord, I thank you for each of the people here who are serving you. Lord, we know that when your servants serve you well, that we are all blessed. And Lord, we pray that you would be blessed by what goes on here. We pray for good discussions, for good agreements, and that all the people of Fergus Falls would be blessed as a result of what happens here at this meeting. And may it be for your glory too. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's June 5th, 2023, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Just real minor changes to the agenda this evening. I've had a request to remove item number three from the consent agenda, so we'll talk about that one separately. And then I would like to move the recognition of Mr. Jim Nigle to the very top of the meeting and get that out of the way, so he doesn't have to sit through all the business this evening.
And with that, we can approve that agenda as amended slightly through a motion. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. So we will move to petitions and communications, and we have a resolution of retirement this evening for Mr. Jim Nigle, and I will read that resolution. Whereas Jim Nigle has submitted his intent to retire effective June 2nd, 2023, and whereas Jim was hired as a utility maintenance light equipment operator at The Burner on October 19th, 1987, and whereas on March 20th, 1992, he moved to a stationary engineer at The Burner, and whereas Jim transitioned to street department to work as a light equipment operator, and whereas on October 1st, 2001, Jim moved to a heavy equipment operator position at the street department where he has worked until the present time. Whereas Jim's unwavering commitment and dedication to the city of Fergus Falls has made him an incredible asset to the city for almost four decades, and whereas Jim's attention to detail, knowledge in equipment operation and road repairs and knowledge in almost every aspect of public works have made him a valuable asset to the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Fergus Falls to accept the resignation of Jim Nigle and thank him for nearly thirty-six years of dedicated service as an employee of the city of Fergus Falls. The resolution above was offered at a regular council meeting held on June 5th by Council Member Jim Fish, and it was moved for adoption. It was seconded by Council Member Scott Kwame, and it was adopted by the following roll call vote.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. Thirty-six years, that's something these days. We thank you for that service to the city of Fergus Falls.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you. All right, under public hearings this evening, we have a final cost hearing for City Project 5960, which is Linden Broadway to Oak, Laurel Broadway to Oak, and Summit Broadway to Oak, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Yubar, to introduce this project before we open up the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, and good evening, council members. Just want to note, individual assessment notices have been mailed to all benefiting properties. A copy of these individual rates are included in your packet for your review. To date, I have not received any written objections to the pending final assessment rates before you. Prior to opening this final cost hearing for public improvement 5960, I'd just like to give you a little recap of this project. Like, this is a type of reconstruction project of the sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, sewer and water services, and Betuna Street section. Locations is Summit Avenue, Broadway to Oak, Linden Street, Broadway to Oak, and Laurel Street, First Avenue to Broadway. Once we opened the final bids, we determined the final assessment rate of eighty-two dollars ninety-seven cents per lineal foot. For reference, a special assessment rates at the preliminary hearing was eighty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. On those notices, the first payment, if accepted today, would be due July 21st, 2023, the interest rate of five point two five percent, an assessment term of fifteen years. With the construction bid, the total estimated project cost of this project is two million seventy-two dollars, three hundred fifty-seven, two million seventy-two thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents. This amount includes a construction contract, engineering, construction administration, with some contingencies. Of this amount, we're proposing that three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars be special assessed, five-ton road section. The city will also have a sheriff's street, and then also we'll be, we have the sanitary sewer water main also be funding this project. So as you can see, we have with the special assessments, sanitary sewer water fund and storm sewer enterprise fund. It's a fully funded project at two million seventy-two thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents. And I'll just turn it over to Bob, or, excuse me, Bill, to talk about the PR issuance prior to opening the hearing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Brad.
I'll answer to most anything. Just holler, don't you worry. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about, so you know, how do we pay for projects when we do this? So how does the mechanics of that work? So we have, you know, this project of two million seventy-two thousand, and Brian went through the various, you know, funding sources there. The active special assessments that the hearing is for, the three hundred and eighteen thousand, and then the city sheriff, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, five sixty-six. So on the second page of the memo, you see that under financing. Those are what we call the PIR under Minnesota Statute Section 429. And I'll be coming back to you in the future to talk about probably putting a bond together for those. Now, it may, I've been working this through a bit, it may come in a year from now when we look at, you know, like adding Stanton. You know, we're going to probably be going out for bids for that soon. But financing the projects together, because these permanent improvement revolving from bonds, you can combine a few projects, and of course, there's, you know, economy by doing that. You know, you're only going through it once, and one bond rating, so saving some costs there. But when you think about it, we're going to finance the special assessments for fifteen years, well, the city needs to pay the cash out upfront to pay the contractors to do that, as well as for our portion, and then the assessments will come in and be used to help pay for the bonds, basically is what we're doing. On the city portion of that, that five hundred and fifty-three, if we finance that over fifteen years, that'd probably be about a fifty-five thousand dollar levy, rough estimate, just putting out there today. I'll come back again in more detail in the future, but wanted you to know that's how we, how we pay for that. We also have some cash from the PIR revolving fund. I'm analyzing how much we pay down in cash, so we bond less thus than we wouldn't levy for what we pay in cash. So kind of weighing that between this project, combining with Stanton, and coming back, but wanted to give you a heads up on that. Our utility funds, so the sanitary sewer, we would be paying cash for that portion. We built that in the rates and put that in our long-range plans, so we don't borrow money and don't pay interest on that portion. Same for water. Storm water, we don't have as much fun, cash in that fund. So this one, the two hundred and six, most likely will pay cash, but the next project, we may put that in on part of the bond too. So those are all the kind of the puzzle pieces we put together, but wanted just a little high level on that tonight, so you're not surprised when I come back and talk about a bonding, because if we look at just the PIR portion, you know, that's eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars plus cost of issuance for a bond, so you'd easily get over nine hundred thousand in the bond issue when we come back for this one. Again, I'd like to roll that with the next project as well. So all an FYI on that side of it tonight. Any questions on that before I step away?
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
All right, and with that, we will open the public hearing for final costs to City Project 5960 on Linden, Laurel, and Summit from Broadway to Oak. Anyone wishing to speak to this project, please step to the lectern. No, seen, seen no one. I'm going to close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. We'll need a resolution at this time adopting the final cost assessment for Project 5960, which includes public improvements 5347, 5348, and 5349, and awarding the bid contingent upon the awarding of the construction contract to Joe Riley Construction. We can do that through a resolution.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Al. Questions of the council? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kwame. Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under awarding of bids this evening, we will then award that bid to, for services for the same project. Please, Brian, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. On May 16th, 2023, we received a total of five bids that were received and publicly read aloud. The apparent low bidder was Joe Riley Construction with a total base bid amount of one million six hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. The estimated probable construction cost was one million seven hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. We evaluated the bids, conducted the post-bid interview, and determined Joe Riley Construction's bid to be in order and responsive. So at this time, I'm requesting to award the construction services contract to Joe Riley Construction in an amount of one million six hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Thank you, Brian, and we can accomplish this through resolution. Thank you, Al. Jim, thank you. Any questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number two would be a resolution approving agreements with Jeff, Jeffrey Zachman and Carl Zachman for public art to be included in Phase Two of the downtown redevelopment project, and I will call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you may recall, the city was given an NEA grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. That application process took place years ago. We've maintained access to that funding and recently were, were given a match to that amount from the local Dell Trust, so we now have two hundred thousand dollars to award for public art. The Public Arts Commission put out a call for artists within a hundred mile range of Fergus Falls and got back about eight different proposals from artists and are very proud to present to you tonight the two artists that they have decided to work with, should you approve it, for two new pieces of public art to be included in the Phase Two project. One of the pieces will be at the entrance to the park, and one of them will be in the center. There's like a plaza area that will be up above the splash pad, and those two local artists are Jeff Zachman and Carl Zachman. They are a father-son duo. They applied separately, but the commission really loved both of their proposals, and we do have images of Jeff's proposal. This is a maquette, which is a very small example of what the work would be, but these would be kinetic bison that would be running. He's in discussions with the Public Arts Commission about whether or not bison are the exact right fit for the project, but he is very willing to work with them on whatever the outcome may be, but this is the initial proposal that they accepted. So the bison will be running with the wind, and this is a video of Carl's piece, again a maquette, so a much smaller version than what you would see when it's finished. So tonight, what I'm requesting is that you've taken a look at the contracts that we have drawn up to work with both Jeff and Carl. I do have two changes to those contracts that we'll put in if and when they are approved, but the first change would be that they both would prefer to have their home addresses in there rather than their studio address to be sent anything from the city, so that's a change that's easy to be made. And then they're also requesting that instead of the fifteen thousand dollar payment upfront, that gets up to a twenty thousand dollar payment upfront to help cover the costs of materials, which makes sense. These are expensive projects, and they will be heavy costs upfront, and then they'll be reimbursed as they work. So any questions?
Thank you, Clara. Questions from the council? How, how large is that going to be?
Quite large, so the, I don't have the exact dimensions right now. We're, we're working with the engineering firm to do some drawings to show what that's actually going to look like, but the bottom, the bottom butterfly that you see would be just above head height of an adult, so quite arresting in size.
So about thirty of my heights, then? Is that what you're saying?
Give or take, I guess.
Would someone, let's get a resolution on the floor, and then we have any further. Thank you, Jim. Brent, thanks. Further questions?
Also two. Is it, is it each seventy-five thousand dollars, or?
Okay. Thanks. Just a reminder to the public, you mentioned the NEA grant. That funding was specific to art for this project. It was left out of the project for several years, quite honestly, until the Dell Trust stepped up and matched that, so we could access that hundred thousand. So it's not like this funding could have been used for anything else, and thanks to the generous donations of the Dell Trust, we're going to have some very nice art by local artists in our downtown redevelopment phase. Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah, not a complicated one, but typically, these kinetic sculptures have to have a motor to run them. Are these designed to be just wind-driven completely, or are they going to have motors?
These are both wind-driven, and Carl's piece actually is designed so that you could reach up and move the butterflies, and that would, if you start one of them, it will, it will move the rest of them. So neither of them have motors, but that's a, yeah, good question.
Just another question. The excess funds there, can you keep, can we bank that then, or does that go away, or on those, on those grants?
Uh, no, it would go, it would go away. So there's, there will be money set aside from the Dell Trust for another final project, so whatever isn't used for these two pieces is going to go toward another artistic addition, but that, the, the commission hasn't decided exactly what that looks like yet.
Okay. But you can utilize the hundred thousand from the NEA on these two with, so the whole two hundred thousand, I think, yeah, okay, perfect. Okay, so we have a resolution in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have ten items remaining after we remove item number three. Copy in your packet, as well as on the overhead projector. Anyone have any questions on the remaining items? We can remove them. See none, we can pass the other ten items with a single resolution.
I'll make that resolution.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll say.
Thank you. Jim, roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving a CUP permit for processing, manufacturing in a B3 general business district, and I'll call on Clara Beck again to lead us in this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so the planning commission heard this case back on May 22nd. This is a conditional use permit in the B3 zone for hemp processing. It says up there hemp processing, but it's hemp processing, and this is based on an ordinance that was passed back in 2022, City Code Chapter 154.038, which does allow for hemp processing in the B3 zone with a CUP. So the applicant is Sugar High, which is another business that's located downtown. Emily McKeon is a proprietor, and she is hoping to do some hemp processing of food items that would then be sold in her storefront. So she presented her materials to the planning commission. There were no recorded comments made from the public either beforehand or at the meeting, and planning commission passed it unanimously with one member abstaining, as she has done some legal work with Emily in the past and felt that it was best if she just didn't make that vote. But I am happy to discuss what that, what the CUP entails. They passed it with, with no conditions and, and answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thanks, Clara. Questions from the council? Someone like to offer a resolution before we have discussion?
I'll defer that.
Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jim. Question?
Basically, I had talked to somebody earlier. I'd like to basically pull this off and run it later, because this came straight to us, to the planning commission, and I do believe this needs a little bit more discussion. And so, I mean, if we could bring this back to a committee of the hall, I do believe there's a few people that probably got a few things to say. And, but it wasn't brought to us first, it was just brought straight to the, um, straight to the council meeting instead of.
To the consent agenda.
Yep.
I, I, I agree. I think we should look at it as a council, just look at it as a, give it another, I think we can allow it to have another sixty-day extension on it, I believe, without getting in trouble. Is that true?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. The city generally has sixty days in which to approve or deny a written application regarding land use such as this. I'm not sure what the date of the application is.
The date of the application was April 25th, which makes the sixty-day expiration June 24th.
So we do have the opportunity to extend our, and give ourselves additional time to act on a matter of giving us another additional sixty-day period, if that's what you would like to do. You would have to basically state the reasons, and a reason could be that this involves a public concern and you feel that greater public input and study is required, which I think I'm hearing you saying.
Yes.
And so in order to give yourself an additional sixty-day period of time, then you should instruct, well, you should table this issue for another date, and you should instruct staff to send a required written notice to the applicant advising them of, of your decision to grant yourself an additional extension in which to act. But otherwise, with the sixty-day rule, I mean, if you don't act within the sixty days, then it's deemed to have been approved, regardless of whether you take action.
That was going to be one of my questions also.
Okay.
So beans is a resolution on the floor, what do we do now?
Well, if you want to extend the time, I would table the resolution, and I would pass a motion tabling it for a date down the road. You don't even have to give a date, or you could table it after your discussion with the committee of the hall, because I think you indicated you would like to have a discussion on this at the committee of the hall.
I would like to see it at the next meeting, yes.
So you could, you could offer a motion to that effect. If that's approved, then I would also then basically pass a motion directing staff to issue the written notice to the applicant that you're exercising your, your right to extend the sixty-day rule by an additional sixty days.
Do we first have to vote on the motion that's, that's on the floor?
To table it, yes.
The motion that's on the floor is to accept it.
It's a resolution.
You vote on it?
You can, you can delay vote, you can delay the vote.
With a table.
You, you can delay the vote with the table. I mean, you don't have to vote on it tonight. But, but if you're not going to vote on it tonight, then you should for sure vote to give yourself that additional time, so that you're not forced to vote on it, or defaulted by, by not voting on it within the.
Well, if we don't vote on it at, at the next meeting, it's going to go through.
Unless you extend it.
Right. Sixty-day extension.
Okay.
And maybe the best course of action would simply be to vote it down now, with the idea that you are, well, that would vote it down. Well, I think, I think the record would be ample clear in that you're not taking action on the resolution. You got it, you got a motion to table, which, which the motion would allow it to be tabled to.
So I, I could make a motion right now to table it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion to table this.
A second.
I have a comment on the first resolution. I, I guess I don't really see the, the need for a delay. You know, it's a business owner that's, you know, in business, doing something that anyone in town could do, they don't have to do it in a commercial space, and I'm just curious if, let's say, somebody wanted to open up a brewery or a distillery downtown, would there be the same kinds of concerns, or I'm, I'm just wondering why we need to hold this up.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you, Tom. I think there's four, there's four businesses that operate in some capacity, whether some of us like it or don't like it, I guess the council passed laws that is, you know, that have allowed this. We have four businesses that have taken advantage of that. The state is clearly going in that direction, and I think the idea at the time with the council was to have some control over where, when, how. They've gone through the process, through the conditional use permit, and I, I, I agree, I don't see a reason to table it, but there's a motion to table on the, on the floor, so we'll take that, that up. Yeah, Jim?
I did not realize that you have a motion on a motion. I thought once you had a motion, you had to vote on it.
You, you can demand a vote. I mean, so, I mean, is that basically what you're, you're, you're?
Yeah, I'd like to have a vote.
You're calling the question.
I'm calling the question.
The first.
I'm the first.
The first one. And just, can I just ask one third question?
Yep.
If the vote fails, then we could still take this up at the committee of the hall? Is that what you're saying?
You could take the issue up if you want, the applicant could submit another application.
Okay, got it. All right, so the resolution is to approve the conditional use permit as recommended by the planning commission?
Just, just procedurally, Your Honor, I think we better get clarification. I, I'm not sure we can vote on the initial resolution without taking action on the, the tabling motion, which is now the motion that's before us.
Yep. I think just for clarification purposes, if you want to get to the, get to the, to the vote, then that makes sense, it's just to defeat the, you have your hand up.
Oh, I was just, can I also just clarify, like, the process of a CUP and the, so if a proposed conditional use satisfies both the general and specific standards set out in the zoning ordinance, the applicant is entitled to the CUP. If the applicant meets all ordinance standards, city usually has no legal basis to deny a CUP. So if you are going to make a denial, please be sure that you have your reasoning in place beforehand.
And I don't, I don't see any reason to deny it.
All right. We had, we had a good discussion about, and we added, you know, we went through the ordinance to add some language to make council members feel more comfortable. So I, I would agree, I don't, I don't see the, I don't, you know, we have a business that's legally operating that's asking for a conditional use permit that meets the requirements that we've set forward.
You know, and I would be also worried about setting the precedent that, I mean, if some's operating a business that, that, you know, hypothetically say one of us doesn't necessarily agree with, I mean, it's, we can't start picking and choosing as council members which kinds of businesses we want to allow and which we don't. You know, so just my comments on the issue.
Scott?
As I understand the rules regarding a motion to table, typically, once a motion to table is made, there's no discussion, you vote on the table or not, and then you move on.
You know, I, but I believe that that is in the case of if someone makes a motion to table because there's a tornado, if there's some imminent action that has to be taken because of the discussion camp, but someone can't just make a motion to table and then have all conversations cease. That's not, that, there's a difference between a motion to table and a motion to consider at a later point, and this is basically asking to consider at a, at a later point, if that makes sense. I mean, if the Queen of England walked in the door and said, we've got a motion to table second, okay, we're going to go, but she didn't.
Although, she will. So, Your Honor.
So anyway, I, I, not to, I digress, yes.
My, my question is, it did come through the, through the committee of the hall, we had no idea until tonight when I consented, and I understand that we passed the rules before, but that is why I want, I just wanted to discuss this before, so the people would know what's going on. It's something new to us, and it just went from the planning to the consent, and I don't think that's ever hap, has that happened quite a bit?
That's pretty typical.
It is, okay.
If you'd like to change that process, I'm certainly.
That's the reason I'm just questioning, I just want, I want more time to look at it, because we didn't really get a chance to, so.
And I think that, yeah, okay.
That's my, that's my...
Sure. I think the reason it's on the consent agenda is because, again, this has been before the council, the council passed the ordinance, and if it meets the requirements, typically, they go from the Planning Commission to the consent. So...
I think that because of the fact that the motion basically to postpone is basically would be the proper motion.
Sure.
But the same effect, is that is a debatable motion. It is something that you are debating as well. The motion to end debate is a non-debatable motion. However, it's made second after the motion to postpone, so I think you do have to act on the motion to postpone first. The motion then, if that, if that is denied, or if it's approved, then the matter gets postponed. If it's denied, then I think then we move to the question.
Okay. Yes, Al?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually spoke to somebody from the Planning Commission today, and what was explained to me was that since the code or ordinance, whatever you wanted to call it, code, I believe, said really there's nothing they can, they can do this. I also talked to Public Health today, and as I spoke to the person at Public Health, that person had said, you know, the new law with legalizing marijuana and things of that nature is over 300 pages long, and there's a lot of stuff in there that is a lot of gray area, you know, something I don't, I know very little about, and I'll say that right now. I'm looking to others who are in the, in that line of work, like Public Health, and I know that person had some major concerns about that. As a, as a customer to a business that, I don't have young children anymore, but, you know, I look at it as a lot of these places are posted if they have peanuts on their premises, because there's allergies to peanuts. You know, is there, would there be any kind of a posting that the THC is, is used here and, and, and made or into, it's just a question. I'm trying to equate that with something that people might understand.
If that's a condition you'd like to place on, on allowing the CUP, you are certainly able to do that. If you would like there to be a posting saying THC edibles are manufactured on this premises?
I, I guess, you know, what I'm trying to get at is that there's, this is such new ground, and I know something is going to happen, either to the good or bad, however you want to look at that. But I think that, you know, people have a right to know what is being made in a shared kitchen, you know, and that shared kitchen came up twice in this presentation here. And I don't like the idea of a shared kitchen. I think that if there's a business that is going to produce this, that they would have their own kitchen. That's just where I'm kinda coming from with it, just the information that I received today, and a little bit that I had to research it.
Thanks, Al.
I guess, addressing, you know, preparing these types of things, THC-containing materials with, with other kinds of foods, I would guess that salmonella has killed many, many, many more people than THC. And I think if we can handle salmonella, we can handle a little bit of, I mean, things are cleaned, things are sterilized, things are sanitized. I don't, I don't know why that needs to be an issue.
If I may respond, I think if, if we're gonna compare it to salmonella, I've had a lot of microbiology, Tom, and these are two very different things. Just to look at that, salmonella is transferred because things aren't clean. So, that's kind of the issue there. And what we're trying to look at is, I think people have the right to know, if they're gonna consume something, what's been cooked in that kitchen. I think that's just good public awareness. Thank you.
Thanks. So, we have a motion to table, or to postpone, which is why we've been debating the motion to postpone. We have a motion to postpone. Everyone clear on the motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, so we will postpone. We will put this on the agenda for presumably the next Committee of the Whole, and we'll continue the discussion. In the meantime, we need to have a, we need to take action on...
Yes, on, do you wish to extend the 60-day rule and to allow you an opportunity to continue to study and take further public comment on this issue that Al identifies there's a public question? So, if you wish to do that, you should basically take a motion to exercise your right to extend the 60 days and instruct staff to issue a written letter to the applicant.
So, by, excuse me?
Yeah, please, Tom.
So, by extending it, it just keeps the process in its current status?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I'll make that.
Motion to extend the 60-day rule.
Second.
Second, all in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under ordinance and resolutions this evening, we have a first reading of ordinance 38, 8th series, amending chapter 36.01 regarding the local lodging tax. We just need that, that's been discussed, we just need that introduced this evening.
I will introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Item number two is a resolution accepting JLG Architects Professional Service Proposal for Design Development Final Design and Construction Administration in the amount of $939,600 for Public Improvement 9504, which is the Aquatic Center Improvement Project. We can do this through a resolution, if someone would like to offer that?
I would like to offer that.
Scott, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Scott, discussion?
Yeah, I just, just a mayor from me.
Please, Al.
I guess, I'm a little bit shy of saying yes to this, just due to the fact that we're looking at a million dollars for this to go out the door. And, you know, there's also a, which we don't talk about it, but there is a petition out there online to change the venue. And I don't know, is this gonna change, if that happens and goes through this petition? Is this going to change this design group that it's gonna be, that it will be more? You know, I don't want to throw some money away. And also too, I'd like a projection, like most businesses would have, a projection on what this is gonna cost a year to run. You know, we can probably get the money it built with the sales tax, but what is it gonna cost us to run this? And I feel we're jumping the gun a little bit here and kinda putting the cart before the horse with voting for almost a million dollars for, to a design firm. So, I'm, I, I'd like to see a projection, and I don't know, Bill, if that has been done on that, roughly, yeah, if you would.
Mayor, would you like me to talk briefly?
Yeah, please, Bill. Would you want to address that? Then we'll also address the petition, I think.
So, what's that?
And then it's the difference between...
Correct. Yeah, good point. So, if you go out to our city website, under the tab Projects, we have a study that was put together by Bolton and Mink on this. We had an original study by U.S. Aquatics a few years prior to that, and then Bolton and Mink updated that study, and on page 15 of that study has the operating cost estimates of that. And these costs have been shared throughout the community. I know when GNR Communications Director was, you know, sending out the postcards and whatnot and speaking at groups, directing people to go to, what was the website?
Play Your Way Fergus Falls.
Thank you.
PlayYourWay.com.
Dot com. Play Your Way Fergus Falls, brought you to the project, brought you to this study, and talked about it, and even in some of the literature, did talk about the operating costs in that. So, we would look at, what Bolton and Mink came up with is about $278,000 a year in expense, and estimated revenue of $150,000, 153, but $150,000 of revenue. So, there's a shortfall there of $127, just about $128,000. And we have shared that. The pools, you know, we're not gonna make money on this. I mean, the city, if you're gonna do this, the city has to kick in on that. So, been very clear about that. I know, Andrew, you researched with other cities around the state. So, that is out there. It's, it's a fact. We will have to put that in our budget.
Do you know, where's the planning on coming from, the shortfall? Do you, do you have that figured out, Bill?
So, we would have to build that in the budget for the year 2025, because we'll be constructing, and of course, some of that would go through a property tax levy, absolutely. Because as you saw in our audit report, our major slices of the pies where cities are funded is intergovernmental aid and property tax dollars. That's how city governments are funded. So, if you don't, you know, the charges for services of 150 would go into that slice of the pie, so.
Your Honor?
Yes, Scott?
This, this all came out before the vote.
Correct.
Yes, I, I asked the same question this morning, so, I, that's my question.
Yep.
That was it, sorry.
Thanks, Scott.
They're good questions. I mean, that's, we do want to know. We do want to know what are those estimates, so that's...
Other questions, discussions?
I, yeah, I mean, I guess regarding the timeliness of the concerns, you know, Andrew Rolfe, I mean, the water park, it's, it's happening, and it's, it's happening in a location that was selected during a years-long selection process, right?
I mean, the voters have approved a ballot question that places this thing in a park.
Yeah.
I, I have concerns about, I would have concerns about, you know, trying to look at another location and what the process would look like, and perhaps, you know, that, if, if there's a petition that comes through, that could be, Von Council could weigh in on that, on that, on that question in particular, but I'm, I, I just don't see how you can ignore a ballot question that is specific.
And as, as far as I'm concerned, it's, I mean, it's a done deal. I mean, you know, this, this planning process was years and years and years with public input sessions and information made readily accessible. One, all one had to do if they couldn't find information was call City Hall and ask about it, and, I mean, the, the location was chosen after an exhaustive process, and the budget numbers have been well-publicized, and I think we just, let's go forward with the project that, I mean, the issue that I've heard about the most since I've been door-knocking since 2016, young families, we want a water park. I mean, that's the number one thing I hear about. We want a water park. You, you go to the Breckenridge Water Park on a hot day in the summertime, and you're gonna see, you know, probably throughout the day, 50 people from Fergus Falls. Well, how about we bring those people here, you know, instead of our families leaving town for recreation, how about we keep people here and bring people in from other communities to spend money and, and patronize our local businesses and give our kids something to do? We hear all the time, kids don't have anything to do in Fergus Falls. So, I, I mean, this, it's been settled, and I, you know, I, 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 yeah, I just think that we could be using our time a little more productively.
Thank you, Tom. So, we have a resolution on the floor and a second.
Okay, first, the council?
Certainly, you can, please do, Mr. Layton.
Mark Layton, they know me on Peg Access as Deputy Festus. In regards to the water park, I think it was initially planned as a water park. At the very last minute, it was put at Roosevelt Park. I think there's a lot of miscommunication there as to where and who was voting for what. People read they wanted an Aqua Center. Great. I've been underwater more than most of you people alive. I like water. I believe in water, but transparency is true. There's a lot of misinformation. Bill, what's the total bonding annual payment for the Aqua Center and DeLagoon? Because we tried to split this in 14 years, nine years.
No, you, Your Honor...
Yeah, 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 we're not gonna, we're not gonna, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Bill.
But, but then we're gonna move on, and we're gonna call for the vote.
In, in, yeah.
Because I, I'm taking exception to what you're saying already. The prop, the process of selecting a site, whether you agree with it or not, or whether I agree with it or not, was a public process that was very transparent, and it was in writing on the ballot that 60% of the people of Fergus Falls agreed to. So, we're not gonna sit here and throw accusations that it was not transparent or something else. We've got a project, the voters voted on it, we're moving forward, whether you like it or not, Mr. Layton.
You're here.
I didn't say I liked it or didn't like it.
I didn't say whether I did or not. I said we're moving on, though. So, Bill, did you want to share any numbers? If, if not...
So, I'm thinking it's important that the taxpayer understand.
They did. They had it on the ballot, and they voted for it.
Budget-wise, excuse me?
You asked, you said that it was, it was that put on there at the last moment, and that it was some, it was discussed at a pub, in several public meetings, through a public committee, it was on the ballot that the people voted for. It was, it was told every time it was publicly discussed where this was going to be. So, for you to insinuate that it was somehow not transparent to the voters, or somehow we're not, we're not being transparent right now, is completely, it's, 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 please, please continue, Bill, if you'd like, otherwise I'm gonna call for the vote.
So, let's talk numbers then. Bill?
Okay, just, just briefly, as we know, the numbers that were included in the question as well, $10.8 million for the, and we're gonna talk about this when we get to the next action, where we asked you to approve the legislative law, but $10.8 million for the Aquatic Center, $5.2 million for the DeLagoon Park Improvements, so that's a total of $16 million for project costs. So, that's total project costs. You would add bond issuance costs on top of that, come up to about $6.2 million, estimating 3.5% interest for that. You're looking at like $21.8, $21.9 million over the life of those bonds, which we would, we will collect the sales tax starting in October of this year through 12/31/37. So, the total principal interest...
Yeah, what was the annual principal payment on the total bonding? Principal and interest?
Let's see.
Per year?
Annual payment total, you know, like 1.48, 1.5 million dollars.
Okay. And what was your so, sales tax collections last year in 2022, based on the audit?
What was that?
What was the total tax collection, sales tax collection on the audit?
Okay, so, sales tax collected for 2021 was 1.5 million. If you're saying in the audit last year for '22, remember, we stopped the sales tax at the end of third quarter, so that wasn't a full year. So, we stopped at September 30.
Like a million, two million, three?
Yeah, so we were actually, oh, it was percentages higher than the prior year. I want to say there's times we were 7% higher than the prior year or 10%. So, yeah, we, we looked at that, because when we project out to 2037, I mean, we need all those years. I want to start it in 10-1 of, of this year, but 2022 would look lower because that wasn't a full year. We stopped it at the end of a quarter.
Okay, thank you. And I understand the pool in Wapton's not gonna close this year, but they're contemplating that because of the budget costs. More headheaded, just throw another $500,000 in there. So, your operating costs are gonna run about a negative 150, 170 a year.
In your opinion.
So, I thank you for your time. Again, it's important that the city understands, that the community wants to know, and I'll research the initial publication on the vote for the Aqua Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. Any further discussion from the council before we call for vote? Yeah, Andrew?
Yeah, Your Honor, for the record, I just want to read the ballot question, because there's a lot of accusations being made that we weren't transparent, and this is the exact question which the voters were voting on, Mr. Layton, and if you listen to what I say, you'll hear that we talk about more than the, the capital expense. It said, "Shall the city of Fergus Falls impose a sales and use tax of one-half of 1% until December 31st, 2037, or until $10.8 million plus an amount equal to interest and the cost of issuance of any bonds is collected to finance an aquatic center in Roosevelt Park? The total sales and use tax approved by the voters at this election to finance this project and any other project will not exceed one-half of 1%." And Bill just did a great job, I think, of talking about how we've accounted for the capital cost, the cost of issuance, the cost of interest related to those bonds, and how we were very transparent throughout the entire process. And any confusion related to yours came from you, Mr. Layton, standing in front of a crowd, representing yourself as a member of the city, misstating the number of years as it relates to this project. We've been very transparent. We hired a communications person prior to the election, who spent 95% of her first several months on the job educating the public about this project, pushing these numbers out and this information out there, and we made it a very, we're very, very deliberate and intentional about making sure the public knew exactly what they're voting on. So, trying to cloud this with doubt after the fact, I think does a real disservice to the 60% of the people in the town who understood the message and supported the project. So, I look forward to the council directing staff to continue to move this forward, and , and staff's gonna build a really good project for the community, along with all of our partners.
Thank you, Andrew. I think that's what I said. Scott?[1758.41]
I think a point that could be made is whether the number's $10 million, $20 million, it could be $300 million. And to any neighbor of mine, their question isn't, how many millions of dollars is this? Because they're not going to chip in $300 million or $10 million or whatever. Their question is, what does this do to my property taxes? What's it going to do on an annual basis? That's a number that a person can handle. So as you think about, you know, what's the impact of this, it's more about what's it going to do to an individual property owner's taxes on an annual basis than whether the number is 150 or 10 million or 100 million. Throwing around big numbers just to sound scary, I think, is not very helpful. And I think it would be more useful for us to look at what the impact is. Now, we've got $150,000 costs that we're going to have to move into our budget. We've got a $40 million budget. This is not a significant, big, scary number for the city of Fergus Falls. So with that, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Scott. With that, I think I'm going to call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Yes.
Nope.
Thompson.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving Minnesota Sessions Law 2023 Regular Session, Chapter 64, Article 10, Sections 18 and 19, which deals with local option sales tax for the DeLagoon Park and Aquatic Center projects. I'll call on our city finance director, Bill Somar. Good evening again, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is what I just summarized a bit for you, but originally the legislature, so we were required, and Andrew's going to talk a little bit in the legislative update, but we originally got legislative approval for a $7.8 million aquatic center and a $5.2 million DeLagoon project. Then our estimates came in, they were higher for the aquatic center, and seeing we needed to go up to $10.8 million for the aquatic center. So that is what we went to the voters with. We checked with people down in the legislature, saying, okay, we know you did, 7.8, we're going to go to the voters and ask for 10.8. Fergus Falls is the only city that did that in the state, and that's, it's a good thing we did. So went back for that. The legislature now has approved that additional $3 million. So you'll really see in the documentation here in the resolution how it talks about the original 7.8, the additional $3 million. Andrew and I talked with our bond attorneys. Do we have to have, you know, why doesn't it just say 10.8? Well, it's because the laws were done in separate sessions, so being very clear about this additional $3 million that was approved. So one thing, when we enact local sales taxes, the legislature gives that approval, the local voters give that approval, and then it comes to you as a council where you need to approve that Minnesota law. So that's the first thing we're asking you to do tonight is adopt this resolution approving Minnesota Session laws from the 2023 Regular Session, Chapter 64, Article 10, Sections 18 and 19. You have that in your packet. And then we'll also be sending a certificate here, certificate of approval of special law by the governing body. Then we send that into the state as well. And then implementation comes with the ordinance that's also in your packet. I'll just talk about that briefly now because that'll be the next item. We would need you to introduce that ordinance tonight. It would then come back in two weeks then for the adoption or the second reading on that. We want to do that because we need to get everything into the state 90 days prior to implementing. Sales tax need to be off for one year. We ended last September 30th, so October 1st is as soon as that can go on, and that's why that's in the ordinance here. And we do need that collection to start on 10-1, so. And, Andrew, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Bill. So we would look to someone to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Brent. Questions for Bill regarding this resolution, the session laws of 2023? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy. Yes.
Yes.
Free Myers.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
A resolution approved. And then, as Bill mentioned, we will also need to do a first reading of ordinance 39 eighth series approving those Minnesota Session laws from the 2023 regular session. We'll just need someone to introduce that this evening.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Councilmember Fish. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,330,669.09. Anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director.
I'll offer the resolution, pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe. Yes.
Yes.
Free Myers.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth, to give us a legislative recap of the 2023 session that was very productive for Fergus Falls.
It was. Thank you, Your Honor, councilmembers. It's good to finally see recap and not update. It's, it's always nice when they're not in session in St. Paul. One less thing to worry about, and I say that about both parties. But anyway, we did have a pretty good session when it was all wrapped up. A week prior to the end of the session, things looked like they were falling apart and weren't getting good, good news out of St. Paul, but Representative Backer and Senator Asmussen were at work for us and really engaged. Senator Asmussen was right in the mix as things wrapped up down there and had a hand in negotiating the $300, $300 million nursing home bill, which allowed for a bonding bill to move forward. And because of his work, he was able to get a significant cash appropriation in the bonding bill for the city of Fergus Falls. So we received $4 million through that cash bill for the dairy property. To break that down a little bit, 1.2 million will be for the acquisition from the Port Authority to the city for the 11-point, I think it's 5.7 acres. Claire and I have gone back and forth on the exact acreage, but that's the river buffer parcel or the parcel nearest the riverfront. 1.6 million of the 4 million will go towards rail crossings at Broadway and St. Andrews Street. That includes lights and arms and all the necessary improvements related to both of those intersections to prepare the site for redevelopment. 700,000 will go towards the River Buffer Trail and actually constructing the trail that's been planned for several years. And that leaves about a half a million dollars that, under the language of the bill, we can spend on public amenities on the site or public parking related to the River Buffer Trail. So a lot of options for us there as we continue to work towards getting that project closer to development. We, Bill just talked about the $3 million additional sales tax authorization. The only thing I'll add to that is, you know, Bill mentioned we are the only city in the state that did it the way we did, and we got a lot of thanks from the tax committee that we had the foresight to put the big number on there, the big scary number, as Scott would say, and, and be transparent and let the, the public know exactly what they were voting on, rather than try to go with a smaller number and then come back around and add the 3 million. So frankly, I would argue that we were more than transparent and went above and beyond more than other cities in the state that saw the same increases. Also, we received $75,000 to fund the water quality 3D pilot project on Lake Alice, so it'll be interesting to see how that all plays out. There were increases to local government aid during this legislative session. Fergus Falls is going to see an increase of $576,845, which is up just over 15%. So that'll really be helpful for the tax levy committee as they work towards the 2024 budget. And then there was also one time, I think it was 300 million towards public safety, and our portion of that in Fergus Falls is $614,465, which can be spent on public safety expenses, with a few exceptions, one of them being building construction or reconstruction. So working with Chief Muckon and Chief Bergerin to look at a, or a plan with those dollars. Obviously, the paid family medical leave bill is an important one as we have, you know, 120-plus employees. Legalization of marijuana, we heard a little bit about the unknowns with that this evening, so we're going to continue to monitor that. It's looking like the Office of Cannabis Management will be up and running by 2025, and that's when we anticipate sales will actually start happening of marijuana in dispensaries. There was a new program called the Electric Generation Transition Aid, which we should be eligible for, so we're trying to figure out the implications of that. That's related to closures of coal and other power plants, so our Hoot Lake Power Plant closure. And the legislation was drafted specifically to look back because we've been trying to get that legislation in place for a handful of years while Fergus Falls was actually going through that closure. So we should be eligible for some aid under that as well. And then finally, the, I know the Daily Journal did a good story on this the other day, but the historic tax credit, this council passed a resolution of support for the reimposition of that earlier this year, and that was approved and extended for another eight years. So, you know, that's certainly an important part of some of these projects, including the Mill project here down the road. So anyway, just want to give a special nod to Senator Asmussen, Representative Backer. Again, you know, both being in the minority party, they fared pretty well for, for us as a community with not a lot of leverage. And Joel Carlson has been our lobbyist for, I think, about 20 years now, and he does a great job. We talk daily throughout the legislative session, and, you know, just having the, the boots on the ground and, and somebody that's monitoring and, and doing all that work for us has paid dividends. And, and once again, when we can show a $4 million cash contribution to the city, I think it's a small price to pay for his services, so. If there's any questions, I'm happy to, to take a stab at that. Otherwise, we'll see how all this plays out and, and certainly have some projects funded that we maybe didn't expect to be about a week before the session ended, so.
Yeah, don't forget the work of the legislative committee, which includes yourself and Tom Ruffer, Councilman Ruffer and Councilman Hicks as well, so. Tom?
I just want to thank Andrew and all the city staff that worked so hard on this.[1745.72]